Good evening and welcome to the Florida Department of Transportation's Rule Making Public Hearing Webcast. My name is Justin Hanna and I will serve as your moderator for tonight's webinar. To open the meeting, I will state that today is Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, and the time is now 6:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. The purpose of this hearing is to present proposed changes to Rule 14-15.0081, Florida Administrative Code, to establish toll rates on department toll facilities. Whenever the department proposes changes to rules, it is done in accordance with Chapter 120 with the Florida Administrative Rule Process. This process includes public notice of any rule amendments, including a mandatory notice in the Florida Administrative Register and optional public hearings. After we detail the proposed changes to the rule, we will also provide an opportunity for the public to comment or ask questions. This hearing was advertised in the Florida Administrative Register on November 18th, 2021. It was also advertised in newspapers throughout the state in both English and Spanish. Websites for Florida's Turnpike and the Florida Department of Transportation were also provided notice of tonight's hearing. And finally, email notification of this hearing was sent to state and local public officials. The Florida Department of Transportation solicits public participation without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. For more information regarding Title VI, please contact Tony Espinosa at Florida's Turnpike Enterprise at (407) 532-3999, or Jacqueline Paramore at (850) 414-4753. This Rule Making Public Hearing is being conducted pursuant to Chapter 120 Florida Statutes. This hearing is being held as a communications media technology proceeding pursuant to Rule 28-109 Florida Administrative Code. The format of tonight's hearing is a webinar-style meeting. Our participants tonight are either joining us from a remote location such as a personal home computer, or they are attending at one of the site access locations the department has provided. After I complete these informational and housekeeping slides, a presentation by Jackie Churchill, Chief Financial Officer of Florida's Turnpike Enterprise, will be played. After our presentation, we will open the webinar to receive comments and questions from you, the audience. At this time, we will recognize all federal, state, county, or city officials who are present tonight. Attending virtually, we have Joseph McMullin, Town of Oakland Commissioner, and Thomas Lanahan, Executive Director, Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. At any of the district offices, and also Larry Bryson of Ocoee City Commissioner. If anyone is joining us from any of the district offices, please raise your hands on the webinar and please be noticed. All comments and questions received through the webinar tonight will be acknowledged and made part of the official record of tonight's hearing. They can be submitted several ways this evening. As shown on your screen, if you are attending from your personal computer, you can submit a written question or comment through the questions box in the webinar menu on the side of your screen. You may also provide a verbal comment. You'll need to click on the "Raise Hand" icon on the sidebar of the webinar menu to raise your hand. To arrive verbal comments, you can use the computer audio option, which allows you to listen to the webinar through your computer speakers. But if you want to make a verbal comment using this option, your computer must be equipped with a microphone or microphone headset. If you are unsure whether your computer is equipped with a microphone, your best bet is to choose the phone call option. To make a verbal comment, you can use either of the audio functions located on the audio tab in the webinar menu. The easiest and recommended way is to use the telephone option. All you need to do is click the "Phone Call Radio" button, call the telephone number provided with your registration, and follow the prompts to enter the access code and audio PIN. For everyone's benefit, all attendees are muted or, as the webinar states, in listen-only mode when you join the webinar. When it is your turn, I will call on you to make your statement and you will be unmuted. If for some reason you start to have audio problems during the webinar, please first retry your audio connection or contact us through the question box and we will try to assist you. For those persons attending at district site access locations, you may also provide written or verbal comments. Written comments, please fill out a comment card provided by the facilitator shown on the screen. And if requested, the facilitator will type your comments into the webinar question box so they will become part of the record of the webinar. You can also let the facilitator know you'd like to provide a formal comment verbally. They will click the "Hand" icon for you and I will call on the site access location when it is time to speak. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit comments about the proposed rule amendments presented tonight. After the formal presentation is over, we will continue to accept comments through the webinar question box until 7:00 PM this evening. If you want to make a question about any of the proposed amendments to the administrative rules presented after the webinar, please send comments to Justin Hanna at justin.hanna@dot.state FL.us or by US Mail at PO Box 613069, Ocoee, Florida, 34761. All comments and questions received through the webinar tonight or email will be responded to after a seven-day comment period. Lastly, meeting materials for this hearing are available on the Turnpike website at There is also a link to this webpage on the homepage of floridasturnpike.com. This hearing is being recorded and a recording will be made available on the website on Monday, December 6th, 2021. So with those housekeeping items taken care of, we will now begin the presentation.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Jackie Churchill, and tonight we will be discussing proposed rule amendments to Rule 14-15.0081. The agenda for tonight's presentation will be as follows. We will begin with a brief review of the setting of toll rates and the toll rate schedule, and then a review of the conversion of the current ticket system segment of the Turnpike Main Line to all electronic tolling. We will then review the two new facilities being added to the toll rate schedule, the Gateway Expressway and Suncoast Parkway from US 98 in Hernando County to County Road 486 in Citrus County. Next, we will review the five new interchanges being added to the toll rate schedule, Northwest 170th Street, Northwest 8th Street, Sand Lake Road, Braddock Road, and Ridge Road. Then we will review an overview of the future Winter Lake Plaza on Polk Parkway. And finally, we will review other updates to Rule 14-15.0081. Chapter 338.155 of the Florida statute permits the Florida Turnpike Enterprise to collect tolls on its facilities. These specified facilities and their corresponding toll rates can be found in Rule 14-15.0081 of the Florida Administrative Code. The ticket system, as it is commonly referred to, is a 155-mile segment of the Turnpike Main Line that extends from just north of Boynton Beach, near Milepost 87, to just south of the Kissimmee-St. Cloud interchange at Milepost 242. On this segment of the Florida's Turnpike Main Line, customers not using a SunPass or other interoperable transponder are given a ticket when they first enter the system along the main line or at an interchange. When customers exit the system, they return their ticket to the toll booth attendant and pay the corresponding toll amount shown on the ticket. The toll rate a customer pays is dependent on their entry and exit points along the system. This results in as many as 13 potential toll amounts for each exit point, which leads to increased travel times, operational complexities, and customer confusion. These cash transactions also require drivers to stop at toll booths and can sometimes lead to heavy backups at on- and off-ramps. These locations also limit future interchange improvements due to ramp tolling at these plazas. The current configuration of the ticket system includes two mainline plazas and 12 interchanges. At each interchange, toll gantries are located on all ramps, which in combination with the two mainline plazas are used to identify the entry and exit points of all trips on the ticket system. This new system will feature 12 gantries that will be placed on the mainline instead of on the ramps at each interchange. These new mainline gantries will feature all electronic tolling, or AET. Cash will no longer be accepted on the system. This new system allows for easier, more convenient toll payment for customers by eliminating the need to stop at toll booths, allowing for free-flowing, high-way-speed travel through toll ganries. This will eliminate the queuing at toll plazas and provide environmental benefits by reducing fuel consumption and vehicle emissions. AET on the ticket system will provide a seamless mainline customer experience along the entire 312 miles of the Turnpike Main Line. Customers will pay tolls using one of two options. The easiest and most cost-effective option is to use a SunPass for all toll payments. SunPass customers will be able to take advantage of the lowest rates available throughout the Turnpike system. SunPass is the preferred method of payment for tolls, as many toll roads in Florida do not have a cash payment option. Driving Florida's toll roads with a SunPass transponder means no hassle no matter what toll road you drive. There are two SunPass transponders, the SunPass Mini, which is accepted on toll roads in Florida, Georgia, and North Carolina. However, the SunPass Mini cannot be moved to different vehicles and cannot be used on motorcycles. The SunPass Pro, which can be moved to different vehicles and used on motorcycles, is accepted on toll roads in Florida, Georgia, North Carolina, and anywhere in the United States where EZ Pass is accepted. The easiest way to purchase a SunPass Pro or SunPass Mini is by going to www.sunpass.com. Customers select the type of transponder they want, provide payment and shipping information, and receive a transponder in the mail. SunPass.com is available in both English and Spanish. Customers can also call the SunPass Customer Service Center at (888) 865-5352 and order a transponder from a representative. There are also many retail locations where you can purchase a transponder, including public supermarkets, Walgreens, CVS, Am Scott, all full-service AAA Auto Club South locations, Navarro Discount Pharmacies, and Sedano Supermarkets. Transponders can also be purchased at all Turnpike service plazas and at select visitor centers. In addition to SunPass, the Turnpike system also accepts E-Pass, EZ Pass, Peach Pass, Quick Pass, and Leeway. Customers can also pay by establishing a prepaid toll-by-plate account, in which customers have toll payments debited from a prepaid account. Prepaid toll-by-plate customers are not charged a $2.50 administrative fee that applies to standard toll-by-plate customers. Here is a video of AET in action. This allows for high-way-speed travel through the toll ganries, which eliminates delays and backups previously experienced on the current ticket system at toll collection points. The current toll structure, in which customers are charged one of 13 different rates at an exit point based on their entry point, will be replaced by one in which the toll charged is the same for every customer using the same payment method and same vehicle class at each new mainline gantry. This new mainline gantry system removes a need to match entry and exit points in order to calculate the toll. The location of these toll ganries ensures an average toll rate of 8 cents per mile is maintained for two-axle vehicles. These tables show a comparison of the current toll rate per mile and the toll of the full-length 155-mile trip on the ticket system for a two-axle vehicle. The SunPass rate of 8 cents per mile is calculated by dividing the cost of the full-length trip by the system length of 155 miles. The minimum toll rate will be 25 cents, which is applied at two mainline locations, at the Belvedere Plaza between State Road 80 and Jog Road, and at the PGA Boulevard Plaza between State Road 710 and PGA Boulevard. The SunPass toll will be $12.55 for the full-length trip. The average toll-by-plate rate will be 10 cents per mile, similar to today's rate. The minimum toll-by-plate toll is 50 cents. The toll-by-plate toll will be $16.30 for the full-length trip. The new rate table shows both SunPass and toll-by-plate rates, as well as the axle-based rates for vehicles. The longer distances between interchanges allows the tolling structure to remain at 8 cents per mile for SunPass customers and users of other interoperable transponders. The rate for toll-by-plate customers will continue to average 10 cents per mile. The calculation of the multi-axle toll rates will be based on the number of axles as it is done today. Customers who previously paid their tolls with cash and who do not have a transponder will now be charged the toll-by-plate rate. With the AET conversion on the ticket system, the Turnpike Main Line continues to be much lower price than other Florida agency toll roads. The proposed amendments to Rule 14-15.0081 will also add two new facilities to the toll rate table. The first is the Gateway Expressway in the Tampa Bay area. The Gateway Expressway is a new FDOT facility. The project includes the construction of two new four-lane elevated toll roadways with connections from US 19 to I-275 and from the Bayside Bridge to I-275. The rate table will show the new mainline gantry at Milepost 2, the Gateway Plaza, and the ramp gantry at Roosevelt Boulevard at Milepost 6. For two-axle vehicles, the SunPass customer rate at the Gateway Plaza will be 80 cents, and the toll-by-plate rate will be $1.07. At the Roosevelt Boulevard ramp, the SunPass rate is 26 cents, and the toll-by-plate rate is 54 cents. The table also includes a multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. The Suncoast Parkway is being extended approximately 16 miles from its current terminus at US 98 in Hernando County to County Road 46 in Citrus County. The rate table will now contain the new mainline toll plaza at Milepost 57, known as the Sugar Mill Plaza, a new mainline toll plaza at Milepost 65, known as the La Canto Plaza, and the State Road 44 ramps to the north, northbound on, and from the north, southbound off, at Milepost 68. For two-axle vehicles, the SunPass customer rate at the State Road 44 ramps to and from the north will be 26 cents, and the toll-by-plate rate will be 54 cents. The SunPass customer rate at the La Canto Plaza will be $1.07, and the toll-by-plate rate will be $1.34. Finally, the SunPass customer rate at the Sugar Mill Plaza will be 80 cents, and the toll-by-plate rate will be $1.07. The table also includes a multi-axle toll rate, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. In addition to these new facilities, five new interchanges will be added to the rate table. These interchanges are the Northwest 170th Street Interchange at Milepost 37 on the Turnpike Main Line in Miami-Dade County, the Northwest 8th Street Interchange at Milepost 0 on the Sawgrass Expressway in Broward County, the Sand Lake Road Interchange at Milepost 257 on the Turnpike Main Line in Orange County, the Braddock Road Interchange at Milepost 20 on the Polk Parkway in Polk County, and the Ridge Road Interchange at Milepost 25 on the Suncoast Parkway in Pasco County. The Northwest 170th Street Interchange will be constructed at Milepost 37 on the Florida's Turnpike Main Line in Miami-Dade County. When completed, the interchange will be told for movements to the north, northbound on, and from the north, southbound off, on the Florida's Turnpike Main Line as part of a widening project on the facility. The interchange will be AET. For drivers of two-axle vehicles, the toll amount will be 54 cents for SunPass customers, and 80 cents for toll-by-plate customers. The table also includes the multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. The Northwest 8th Street Interchange will be constructed just north of Milepost 0 on the Sawgrass Expressway in Broward County. When completed, the interchange will be told for movements to the south, southbound on, and from the south, northbound off, on the Sawgrass Expressway as part of a widening project on the facility. The interchange will be AET. For drivers of two-axle vehicles, the toll amount will be 26 cents for SunPass customers, and 54 cents for toll-by-plate customers. The table also includes the multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. The Sand Lake Road Interchange will be constructed at Milepost 257 on the Florida's Turnpike Main Line in Orange County. When completed, the interchange will be told for movements to the north, northbound on, and from the north, southbound off, on the Florida's Turnpike Main Line. The interchange will be AET. For drivers of two-axle vehicles, the toll amount will be 80 cents for SunPass customers, and $1.07 for toll-by-plate customers. The table also includes the multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. The Braddock Road Interchange will be constructed at Milepost 20 on the Polk Parkway in Polk County. When completed, the interchange will be told for movements to the north, northbound on, and from the north, southbound off, on the Polk Parkway as part of the widening project on the facility. The addition of Braddock Road Interchange, the Eastern Plaza, has been relocated just south of its existing location. The interchange will be AET. For drivers of two-axle vehicles, the toll amount will be 54 cents for SunPass customers, and 80 cents for toll-by-plate customers. The table also includes the multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. In partnership with Pasco County, the Ridge Road Interchange will be constructed at Milepost 25 along the Suncoast Parkway. When completed, the interchange will be told for movements to the north, northbound on, and from the north, southbound off, on the Suncoast Parkway. The interchange will be AET. For drivers of two-axle vehicles, the toll amount will be 26 cents for SunPass customers, and 54 cents for toll-by-plate customers. The table also includes the multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. A future Winter Lake Toll Plaza will be implemented at Milepost 16 on Polk Parkway. This new mainline plaza is part of the Polk Parkway AET project and will eliminate the need for differential toll rates and traffic separation at the Central Plaza. Upon implementation of the Winter Lake Plaza, the Central Plaza toll rate will be reduced to match the Winter Lake Plaza toll rates. In addition, the ramp toll plazas on the State Road 540 interchange to and from the east will be removed. For drivers of two-axle vehicles, the future SunPass rate at the Winter Lake Plaza is 54 cents, and the toll-by-plate rate is 80 cents. The table also includes the multi-axle toll rates, which will be calculated with the N- minus-one formula, which equals the number of axles of the vehicle minus one, multiplied by the two-axle toll rate. Other updates to Rule 14-15.0081 and the toll rate schedule include the consolidation of the Turnpike Main Line rate table, combine the Northern Coin Ticket System, Southern Coin and Homestead Extension of Florida's Turnpike rates into one table, addition of toll-by-plate rates to the Alligator Alley, Pinellas Bayway, and Sunshine Skyway Bridge facilities, and update to the Beachline West rate table to reflect a recent toll rate change by the Central Florida Expressway Authority. And finally, updates to milepost numbers of toll ganries which were relocated due to the AET conversion. Now I will turn it back over to Justin for the public comment and question portion of the webinar.
Now it is time for the comment and question period. Joining me here tonight from Florida Turnpike Enterprise are Angela Stark, Communications and Marketing Director, and Carol Scott, Planning Manager. As I previously mentioned, comments and questions can be submitted one of several ways. Written comments can be submitted through the questions box in the webinar menu on the side of your screen. If your menu has collapsed, you can reopen it by clicking the orange arrow. Again, where the webinar menu says "Questions," you can also submit comments pertaining to the administrative rule changes presented tonight. We will try to address the comments and questions submitted. However, all comments and questions submitted through the webinar question box will be responded to via the registered email address and be made part of the public record of tonight's hearing. You may also provide comment verbally. Please click on the "Hand" icon to raise your hand and I will call on you on a first-come, first-served basis. As a reminder, if you choose to make a verbal comment, please make sure that you have either 1) called into the webinar and entered the audio PIN, or 2) have a microphone or headset with microphone, or if you are using the mic and speakers option. All attendees are muted or in listen-only mode with either of the audio choices. If you'd like to make a comment verbally, again, please click on the "Hand" icon to raise your hand and alert us that you have a comment. I will call on you to make your statement, but please wait until the webinar lets you know that you have been unmuted before speaking. I do have some ground rules before we get started. For the benefit of everyone attending tonight, please start your comments by stating your name and location. Also, we would appreciate it if you would limit your comments to the proposed changes to the administrative rule presented only during tonight's meeting. And finally, please limit your comments during this meeting to one minute. You can also submit written comments to me about any of the proposed amendments to the administrative rules presented. Please send your comments to Justin Hanna via email at justin.hanna@dot.state FL.us or US Mail at PO Box 613069, Ocoee, Florida, 34761. With that, I will now open up the presentation for questions. Okay, we received a few questions here, so we'll start to get to those. Okay, so the first question here, we've received here is going to be, "With the changes to the ticket system area, will there be SunPass transponder readers at the entry points to the Turnpike?"
Actually, the SunPass transponder readers, what you're referring to, those are actually our toll ganries. So, along the mainline where the ticket system used to be that we're converting from the ramps, we're going to have mainline toll points along the mainline at ganries. So, there won't be readers when they get onto the system, but as the driver drives through the gantry, it'll read the SunPass.
All right, and another question here, I'm going to read into the record. "Cost comparison of SunPass versus Florida E-Pass. Is E-Pass the same cost as SunPass? How are tourist drivers accommodated?"
That question. Turnpike toll rates are significantly lower than the toll rates on roads owned and operated by expressway authorities in Florida, as was shown on Slide 22. These rates are enjoyed whether a customer has one transaction a month or 50. The rates presented as SunPass were extended to the other transponders that are accepted on the roadways, and those transponders are SunPass, EZ Pass, E-Pass, Leeway, Peach Pass, and Quick Pass.
Okay, thank you for that question. The next question here is from Albert Erdman, and Albert, I'm going to unmute you. Looks like you're self-muted on your end, so if you get a chance, please unmute yourself and then I can unmute you so you can ask your question. I see that your hand is raised.
I have a couple of questions. It appears that the toll rate on the former ticket system went from 1237 to 1255. Why did that go up when there hasn't been a toll change? And the other thing is, why do you round to the nearest quarter and having the proposal rounding from the nearest dime to the nearest quarter? It sounds like a way of trying to obtain more money. With AET, you should be able to charge exactly the correct amount at all times.
Your question, Mr. Erdman. So, the change between the 1237 and the 1255, we're still maintaining the 8 cents per mile. When we calculated the toll rate for the 12 ganries along the mainline, we're trying to stick to the 8 cents a mile. And two of those ganries, however, they were 16 cents a mile, or 16 cents. And so we rounded up to 25 cents to establish the minimum. Now, I'd like to point out that along our mainline, we have no toll points along the entire Turnpike Main Line that are less than 25 cents. However, the full trip, if a driver takes the full trip, that additional toll still averages out to 8 cents a mile. Next question, can you clarify a little bit? Because you mentioned rounding to 25 cents and rounding to 10. Not sure where that came from.
I was reading the actual rule that you're proposing, and it talks about... I was reading the actual rule that you're proposing, and it talks about rounding. In one part, it looked like you were adding $0.25 to the toll-by-plate and then taking that $0.25 off of the Sunpass rate, which I couldn't exactly figure out. And then another section said, I guess formally you rounded to the nearest dime, and now you're going to round to the nearest quarter. What is all that language about that's still in the proposal?
Correct. So what you see is, when you read the rule, that's all of the language that pertains to the Turnpike toll rates, and also the indexing of the toll rates, the adjusting of the toll rates. And the section that you're referring to, actually, if you have the rule in front of you, if you look a couple paragraphs above where you've been reading, it states, "No later than June 30, 2012." So this occurred when the Department of Transportation first started to index toll rates. And so at that moment, at that point in time, no later than June 30, 2012, the rates were indexed by 11.7%. And then in the section that you're reading, this was for locations that did not have cash toll rates, and we indexed the toll-by-plate rates and rounded to the quarter, and that is to establish a higher toll rate for toll-by-plate in order to accommodate the higher cost to collect the tolls. If you read further along in the rule, you'll see that those toll-by-plate rates at subsequent indexing, they're only rounded to the nearest penny. So that was just one moment in time to establish the indexed toll rate. However, I do want to point out that tonight, and for this proposed rulemaking, we are not proposing to index department toll rates. That is not in the proposal tonight. That's just something that you had read historical in the rule.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the question. Next question here is from Commissioner Larry Brunson, and the question is, "How are tourist drivers accommodated?"
That question. As mentioned earlier, the rates that are presented as Sunpass rates are enjoyed by everyone, whether they have a transponder that is E-Pass, Sunpass, EZ Pass, Leeway, Peach Pass, or Quick Pass. They will still enjoy the same Sunpass rate, and I hope that answers your question. And let me just add also, Commissioner, if they don't have a transponder, there is toll-by-plate, and toll-by-plate is a system in which the cameras at the toll gantry capture an image of the license plate, and the registered owner of the vehicle will be sent an invoice at the end of the month. There is a $0.15 administrative charge to cover the cost of printing and mailing, but it is another system that is used for drivers along the Turnpike system.
Okay, thank you for the question. Mr. Erdman, you're unmuted again. Go ahead.
I am wondering, was or has any consideration been made upon this Turnpike conversion to AET of the toll rates themselves in light of the fact that the Turnpike Enterprise is going to be saving a significant amount of money in wages and benefits of toll collectors and related personnel?
So when we established this toll rate for these new toll plazas, the consideration was to maintain our very low toll rate per mile. As we stated earlier, we do have the lowest toll rate per mile in the state. I think the slide showed it was between $12 and $0.25, I believe, for the other toll facilities per mile, so that adds up. But in order to maintain our very low toll rate per mile, we kept it at $0.8. And we also wanted to maintain a similar toll rate that what customers pay today, maintaining that low rate.
Okay, thank you for the question. And while we kind of wait to collect any more questions that are coming in, I will read another statement for the record. This one was received from Ernest Granky from Donella, Florida, and his statement was, "We need an interchange at 495 Citrus Avenue when it is built." So that has been read into the record, and thank you for that. Okay, and again, for those of you on, if you'd like to ask any questions, you can do it one of two ways. You can just submit a question through the question box in the chat box there, or you can raise your hand, and I can unmute you, and you can verbally ask your question to us. And then if you're at any of the district access locations, please let your moderators know if you'd like to ask a question, and they can raise their hand and have you ask us questions if you're at the site access locations. Erdman, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Yeah, so where can you get, where can the public get a list of all the toll ganries and their milepost numbers along with the exit milepost numbers? So that one, is there a, you guys prepare any kind of map of the system, which would basically show whether the gantry is north or south of the exit, or any of that kind of thing in light of this?
Yes, so for the list first, if, when you went to our rulemaking hearing page, and this is also where you found the document that had the rule text, there's a document, it's a PDF document that you can download that lists all of the toll rates for Sunpass, cash, toll-by-plate, and so that's for the list. You can also go to florida'sturnpike.com, and if you go to toll/Sunpass, you can click on FTE toll rates, and you can find the rates there as well.
Okay, thank you for the question. Okay, so we received another question, and I will read it. This is from Commissioner Brunson from the city of Ocoee. "I have to explain away the toll hikes to residents and visitors. With Florida being a tourist state, toll-by-plate seems a little harsh for visiting drivers, whether from neighboring states or rented vehicles. What's the thought?"
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. The process costs higher. It costs higher to process toll-by-plate transactions than it does Sunpass transactions, but there are a number of ways where a customer can access Sunpass. They are sold in several retail outlets as well as online. They can also sign up on the sunpass.com website to pay their tolls in advance. There are several options that are available, and so we believe that it's the best opportunity for people to use the toll rate. Of course, Sunpass is the preferred method, and Sunpass Mini costs $499, and the Sunpass Pro transponder is $1499. So there are many ways that people can access the toll roads with the payment options available.
Okay, thank you for the question. And we have another question from Thomas Lanahan. He asks, "Have you seen drivers in pickup trucks avoiding toll-by-plate by leaving their tailgate down?"
Thank you, Mr. Lanahan. Yes, unfortunately, people do try to evade tolls. However, our agency does partner with the Florida Highway Patrol to help mitigate that evasion.
Okay, thank you for that question. What I'll do is a quick check-in to each of the districts, just to make sure we have no comments or questions there. So I'll start here with District 1. District 1, do you have any comments or questions there on your end?
No.
Next is District 4. District 4, you're unmuted. Do you have any questions, comments, or questions on your end?
No questions from District 4.
Next is District 6. District 6, you're unmuted. Any comments or questions there?
No comments or questions at District 6.
Okay, thank you. And District 7, you're unmuted. Any comments or questions there?
Justin, we do not have anyone who wants to type it in. We do have an attendee who is preparing a written comment that he will leave with us, so maybe you can address how we will handle those.
Okay, if he wants to leave the comment, we will take the written comment, and it will be entered into the record. Okay, and again, for the attendees, you can either raise your hand, and I can unmute you to ask your question, or you can submit it through the question box on the side of your menu screen. Giving a few more minutes. Again, if you'd like to ask a question, you can just submit it through the questions box, or raise your hand on the menu, and I can unmute you. And then at the end, we'll also provide, and you can also see on the screen here, you can also submit written comments, either via email or regular mail. So again, we're still open for any questions or comments from the audience. Mr. Erdman, you are unmuted.
As to the gentleman earlier that was talking about the tourist problems, the particular method that I use is I have extra transponders, which I provide to people that visit the area, and then I just go on Sunpass and total up and settle with them and get my transponder back. And that takes care of the problem, and they don't have to pay the outrageous fees of what these various rental car companies charge, which I realize isn't a Sunpass problem, but these contractors, some of their rates border on rape.
Okay, thank you for the statement. All right, we'll leave there. And again, we're still here for any questions or comments remaining. We'll kind of stay here, kind of live here in person for the next couple of minutes. And again, if there are any questions or anything that are submitted after, we've kind of closed the live Q&amp;A portion. Again, you can still submit those questions via email or regular mail, and they'll still be responded to within our regular comment period. So again, for our live Q&amp;A portion, we'll be here. We'll leave that open for a couple more minutes for any other questions or statements All right, so we'll go ahead and wrap up our Q&amp;A portion of the hearing tonight. So thank you for participating in tonight's public hearing. And just as a reminder, if you want to make a comment about any of the proposed amendments to the administrative rules presented, please send comments to Justin Hanna via email at justin.hanna@dot-state-fl.us or by US mail at P.O. Box 613069, Ocoee, Florida 34761. All comments and questions received through the webinar tonight or sent in will be responded to after a seven-day comment period. A recording of this hearing will be posted on Monday, December 6, 2021, on the florida.com webpage. Thank you again, and have a great evening.